I will call this meeting of the Board of Selectmen to order here in Millville, Massachusetts at 7:01 PM on January 18th, 2022. So I see we have a couple of guests. So Andrew and Todd and Peter, would you mind if we went a little bit out of order just so our guests could speak and then leave and enjoy their evenings? Is that okay? All right, thanks. Okay with you, Todd?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, great. Um, so we'll start with, uh, we'll drop down to five D, which is the Building Department, and introduction number, new building inspector, Joe Fitzpatrick. So Joe, welcome to Millville. I don't know if you wanted to say anything about yourself or introduce yourself at all to the community.
Uh, yeah, first, thanks for the opportunity. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, very well.
Okay, can you, uh, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity. I have had some interaction with the people in town and seen things be going pretty good. Just gonna, uh, feet on the ground here and we should be up to speed. I would say by the end of the week, we should be off and running. Again, I make myself available with anybody that has any questions, building related, that they can reach out to me at any time during the day, and I will get back to them with an answer. Anything else, uh, they need to meet me in person, we can set up an appointment. I make myself available as much as I can to them.
Perfect. Andrew, Todd, Peter, anything else to Joe? We can let him enjoy his evening. Really, Joe, I just wanted to give you a chance to say hi.
Yeah.
Everyone in, that sort of thing.
And so, Joe, you could, the folks could email thebuilding@millville.org. And also then you can share your phone number if people want to call you directly or text you directly. Is that correct?
That's correct.
How do you want people to contact you? Yep, okay.
I've left the, uh, my phone number with the, uh, with the office. So if they call in, if they have to get me, they can get the phone number there. And that's a direct line right to me.
Right. And you typically swing through the town in the mornings and often in the afternoons and...
Yeah, I try to be there every, uh, every evening anyways. And then the morning, if I get appointments, like the other morning I did, I go through and take care of it. And I've even done some on the weekends where guys are trying to get jobs done and just kind of keep moving.
Thank you, Joe.
Yep.
Yeah, no, we appreciate that. Definitely want to keep things moving. All right. Well, Joe, I guess we'll let you enjoy your evening. You're certainly welcome to stay and listen in if you want to, um, hear about the happenings in Millville. But if you want to go enjoy your evening, we all understand.
Hey, again, thank you very much. And like I said, feel free to reach out at any time.
Great, thank you. Okay, and I see Sarah here as well. So that'll be jumping way down to seven A.
Hi, Sarah. Hi, how's it going? Thanks for having me here. Um, so yeah, here for an ARPA update. There was a final rule released, uh, on January 6th. So we had been working with an interim final rule, um, in terms of spending and kind of looking at where to allocate those funds. Um, so the final rule was adopted January 6th, and will take full effect on April 1st. So at this point, you know, it expands and clarifies information, um, in regards to how to spend those ARPA funds. And the big key for us, for Millville, and I think for many communities, is going to be a standard allowance, um, that people can opt, well, communities, uh, can opt to into in order to not have to go through and calculate all of their losses. So this standard allowance is up to $10 million, um, for the entire allocation, um, you know, for whatever community that is receiving ARPA funds. So for Millville, that would be obviously our entire award, which is really good news, um, because it does provide some additional flexibility in terms of spending. Um, it is important, I think, to stay within the parameters of ARPA, um, but it's, it's a really, it's a good, good news, um, I think in general. So we're still looking to spend, you know, within three kind of major headings, personnel, which would be, you know, um, backfilling that, uh, some of the vacancies that are still in the town hall as a result of COVID, um, the administration position, obviously that water specialist that we talked about before, um, in the new final rule, um, responses to restore and bolster government employment, um, hiring can go up to 7.5% above the recipient's pre-pandemic baseline. So it's good opportunity building too, if we can kind of see our way to that in terms of moving forward. Um, public health and safety is now explicitly covering capital expenditures to respond to the negative public health impacts. So that chest compressor for the fire department will be able to be covered now, um, which is great, you know, and again, it's very clear from the new rule that that would be able to be covered. And then again, infrastructure is our next big kind of, um, category. Uh, and so, you know, that, you know, any kind of like water distribution, uh, those types of things would be, um, covered under, uh, the final rule, eligible infrastructure and stormwater management, um, projects. So all, I think, really good news. I think at this point, you know, since Peter and I have really continued to take a deep dive into this and stay at the forefront of information as it's being released, we're hoping to start sort of, you know, allocating, um, those funds and maybe up into a certain expenditure point, um, you know, with kind of between the two of us without kind of coming to this board for every, uh, every single, you know, um, small expenditure. Um, so hoping to maybe just get your insight on, you know, spending. So that's my overview on, on Peter.
So Sarah, yeah, if I could just jump in, a couple of things, just so folks know, we, you know, Millville's award was about, oh, just over 950 grand. And it's not the 10 million, it's 950 is the max that we have available to use of ARPA funds. And Sarah, Sarah's the gatekeeper, as I, uh, call her, and, and I want her to be the gatekeeper. I'm going to be the envelope pusher, if you will. I'm going to be trying to say, I think we, you know, we can do this. Um, starting with, uh, uh, first of all, is adopting or, um, applying for the standard allowance. And in my view, in my interpretation, and as the board, you, you know, I gave you a brief email on this, you know, the standard allowance is for utilization for basically all government services. That said, um, and to keep Sarah the gatekeeper happy, even though you could argue that you could spend it on just about anything, government service related, you still need to stay, or it really behooves us to stay within the general framework of ARPA as outlined in the 455 page, you know, final ruling thing, which, uh, um, Sarah's reading diligently, uh, maybe, um, but I'm not.
Yes.
So, so these basic categories are key, but what, what we'd be looking for from the board are two things, I think, at this stage of the game. One is your approval to adopt or apply for the standard allowance, which gives the greatest, broadest flexibility. And then secondarily, some guidance on, you know, how much flexibility we have, Sarah and I have, to spending the money, um, before coming to you for approval. You know, what levels of approval and when do you want them? As an example, um, the Board of Health had an opportunity to participate with other communities through CMRPC to purchase some, um, you know, test kits. And they wanted to, at first it was going to be one amount, and finally they came into, uh, 500, uh, test kits using ARPA funds. And ARPA funds clearly can be used for that. But because of the prior experience of the free test kits the town did obtain, you know, there are some concerns about how, uh, the distribution of them is managed. And so I was being, there's a word for it, but I won't say it on camera, but I was being tough, if you will, about, uh, freeing up what amounts to $6,000 of ARPA money under a contract with CMRPC that they asked for the town administrator to sign, um, to use beyond, uh, internal uses for employees. You know, the police department burns through these things quickly. The fire department burns through these things quickly. And so we just need to have good control over them. So we're also still staying within the, the objectives of ARPA. And in the case of the first distribution that we went through, the objectives were for people who were enduring hardship, which was broadly defined, but still, you know, we were giving them out to anybody that probably, a lot of people that probably could have gone to CVS and purchased them without much hardship. So we, under ARPA, there is an element of that filtered into the whole objectives of ARPA too. So anyway, that was a $6,000 thing. It had to happen by Friday and it happened, um, but with some contingencies before, uh, yours truly would sign off on releasing a check, if you will. Okay. So, so I'm just looking for some, one, again, your authorization to adopt the standard allowance. Sarah's finding out the specific process, but there's a portal that we, you know, the town has to go into and say, click here, we adopt the standard allowance. And then secondarily, what thresholds would you all be comfortable with not, not having to proactively, uh, get involved in? You would always be alerted to them. We're going to periodically summarize how money's been spent of smaller dollars. But, you know, if you got a big chunk, you, you probably want to weigh in on that before any commitments are made.
Yeah, I think that, um, the test kits, though, is a perfect example. You know, we really needed to be nimble in order to grab, um, the best price, you know, regionally. And we needed right away to decide whether or not we were in or out. And I think that having that flexibility is really helpful to make sure that we are able to take opportunities when they come, you know, to, again, to kind of a smaller amount.
Um, so Sarah, you mentioned there are four areas of spend. So I only wrote down three. I got personnel, public health and safety, infrastructure.
No, just three. Just, those are our three major ones that we're targeting right now. Yep.
Okay. No, no, that's okay.
I may have missed one.
Yeah, I might have misheard. It could be a lot of different things going on. Um, and then with the infrastructure, you mentioned water specifically. With the infrastructure, is there any opportunity for like a building renovation or something like that? Or is it all water?
It's, it's tough, you know, because there is, um, when, I think there's a little bit of an interpretation, um, you know, kind of thing that depending on how you look at it, right? I think adopting the standard allowance is 100% the way to go, um, because it does provide added flexibility. So, you know, some people are interpreting that as, you know, covering things like, um, real kind of total, uh, package infrastructure buildings and such. I'm a little more hesitant to say that that is possible, but I think that I, you know, definitely, um, kind of looking at spaces and I think assessments, we could probably cover, you know, more than actual construction. But I'm, I'm still flushing that out. But, you know, I think that, you know, there's some...
So if we follow the gatekeeper versus the envelope pusher, right? I would push the envelope and say, one, I think we can do that NESHAP study, right?
Yes.
Using ARPA funds. And two, I could argue, and Sarah has to, you know, I kind of want her to say yay or nay, but she's got to do some homework. Um, let's say we want to do a site, a demolition study and site assessment of the old town hall. And how do I push the envelope on that? Well, I say, "Gripes, there's water running through the, underneath the building." And that, to me, makes it akin to water infrastructure under ARPA. So it's that kind of thing that we,
Right.
you know, the way we play. And that's maybe a stretch, but
It's very creative.
But still, maybe, you see? And so it's worth a hard look.
Yes.
Evaluation.
Okay, agree. Um, and then in terms of a threshold, I guess, um, I don't know, I almost want, I almost want to see anything that's like in the thousands kind of range.
Okay.
Um, I don't know, Andrew and Todd, what you have for an opinion. And I know that means like, um, I don't know that we need to vote on it all the time. I think maybe you could send, I don't know, Andrew and Todd, like an email. And then if one of us replies and say, we need to talk about the Board of Selectmen meeting, then we will. Um, but I don't know. And I hate, I know that's going to slow things like way, way down. Um, but I just want people to know that, you know, we're looking at this carefully because it, it is a lot of money.
Sure.
And
I mean, I think, I guess I would add, I would advocate for, and then hope, you know what I mean, for, for enough autonomy to spend up to like 5,000, you know, if, um, if, if, you know, that was comfortable to folks. But it sounds like you...
Yeah, I think what I'm hearing is they, you know, that she would like to have, uh, and for the board to have real time notice
Oh, sure.
of something we're looking at doing before we do it.
Sure.
Allow for opportunity to either schedule it on an agenda or
Just let it go.
you know, just let it go type of thing. That, that seems like a, a pretty agile way to go at it, right?
Yeah. I just, because I look at 5,000, like if you did it 10 times, Sarah, then that's $50,000. And it's like, wow, that's kind of a lot.
No, that makes a lot of sense, I guess. And perhaps the, um, test kit example won't come up again, but it was definitely, I mean, the turnaround on that was, I think, like two or three days, you know? So I mean, you know, it means that we would potentially miss out on an opportunity like that in the future. But that's, you know, I'm okay. I'm, I'm, I'm more of the, you know, checks and balances. So I'm, I'm good with it.
And yes, Peter, you articulated what I was looking for exactly, to like send us an email and like, if Andrew replies, hey, I want this on the next agenda, I don't want you to just buy this, then we'll talk about it on the next meeting. And if it means we miss out on it, like put that in there, well then, you know, then we're probably not going to be able to buy this. And then
Right.
if Andrew feels strongly like, no, I do want to talk about this, or I do, like, I don't want to just take it. It could be me or Todd or Andrew. Could be any one of us to say, no, I, I understand the time constraints, but I still want to talk about it.
So what conversely, could it be potentially a, like, greenlit through that email or no?
I guess unless someone pushes back, then it's greenlit.
Okay.
Andrew, you look like you want to say something, but...
Uh, yeah, so I had a quick question. So for the, um, so if we did the, uh, the allowance, that would give us more flexibility. What type of flexibility are we talking about here? Like just...
You know, again, the only, um, time sensitive example that I have, and I can't speculate what may or may not come up, you know, in terms of, um, you know, purchasing, especially kind of equipment and testing, um, stuff. But that, that is the one, you know, obviously that I have right now. Um, I think that perhaps, you know, many of these expenditures are not going to be time sensitive. Um, and so perhaps, you know, even a spending cap would be moot. Uh, but, you know, so I...
But to help, Andrew, the standard allowance. So if, if we don't adopt the standard allowance, right? We, and really, they put the standard allowance in, in lieu of calculating lost revenues from the pandemic, okay? And Millville really didn't lose much in the way of revenues. And it's a very complex formula that you have to be a, you know, a math major, PhD in math and physics to figure out. So they came around and said, okay, well, we'll allow for the standard allowance. And then you can use that money for essentially any government services as you deem fit. But what we're recommending is that we still stay within the confines of ARPA because Sarah says ARPA, Sarah believes that there are some catch things throughout there, basically, I guess the way I put it. If you don't adopt the standard allowance, then you're really subject to the 420, you know, 455 page final ruling, which says you can use your money for, um, you know, you can use your money for stormwater infrastructure, or you can use it for water infrastructure. But you can't use it for fixing the curb on the side of the road unless you damage the curb on the side of the road from doing a stormwater drain. Under the standard allowance, you can, because it's a normal government service. That's my interpretation. Sarah's almost there. I'm getting her there.
Oh.
Another example, you, I would argue that you could take all the money of ARPA and just fund the budget for three years, you know, or a year and a half, or, you know, whatever it is. And, and, and that's it. And so you don't have to, you know, you skip taxes for a year, you know, or whatever, a portion. You fund all of the assessors department for four years. Well, you can't really, you know, that's not really within the confines of ARPA, but that is how I interpret the standard allowance. It allows you to do that. It would be unwise, but it, you could. You, you follow me? So, okay.
Okay.
Sarah doesn't agree, but, uh, I'm bigger than her.
That's all right. I'm trying to keep my poker face on.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So just as a, oh, sorry.
No, no, go ahead, Andrew.
What, how do you interpret it, Sarah? Just to kind of...
Uh, personally, I, I interpret it that the, the funds do still need to be expended within the parameters of ARPA. And those, you know, are a little more restrictive, um, and a little more pointed. But, um, I do feel like the standard allowance gives more autonomy within those parameters and guidelines. But I, my understanding is that it's best practice is still to stay within those guidelines.
And I think it's also a lot less record keeping. Not that we're not going to keep records, but there's a lot, lot less, you know, documentation in a file that you spent ARPA money on, you know, fixing a sewer drain on, uh,
Right.
you know, Chestnut Hill Road or something.
I think that, you know, for activities and expenditures that fall very clearly within those set parameters, you know, any kind of, um, oversight or monitoring will go very simple. I think that when communities get out into the fray of, you know, well, you know, let me draw this kind of squiggly line over to my project, I think that, you know, there may be some, um, you know, vulnerability there.
You know, here's a, here's an example. Take, uh, uh, fire department turnoff gear, right? That's really a sort of a standard type of thing that isn't, it has to be replaced periodically. It's not a pandemic-related thing, if you will. It isn't a problem that you have to face because of the pandemic. It's a problem you have to face because of doing fire department services, if you will. Under the standard allowance, in my view, you arguably could spend ARPA money to purchase those. A case can be made. And, and, and it's still somewhat related to, they still have to be able to go out and deal with folks in those turnout gear in a pandemic. So, I mean, that's the envelope pushing approach that I think Sarah might see is a logically, a logical extension of use of ARPA funds. As one example. And there are many, you know, you could come up with a bunch of them.
Right, like the walkies for the, um, uh, police department.
Correct. Correct. So the police department is, wants to replace all their radios, they're going to submit a grant, um, through Metacomit. And Metacomit will then put the grant through to state 911 to get, see if they can get those paid for. But if that fails, one could argue that ARPA funds could be used for that. But I'd still say the first route is the preferable route to go.
Right.
leaving ARPA money available for other purposes.
Absolutely, you know, but it, but it is another one of those kind of fuzzy tie-ins that, that may be possible, um, even though it is, you know, a system that is just meeting its end of life.
And I think you just came up with a perfect term for what we're talking about, fuzzy tie-ins.
Fuzzy tie-in.
That's a useful term. We can all understand.
Yeah.
And one quick question. So let's say we spend money on turnout gear or the radios or whatever. Um, how long will it take for us to know whether it's approved to be ARPA? Because I'm assuming we pay for it out of our own pockets and then we get reimbursed, right? So how long will that?
No, so the money, we, we don't get reimbursed. We get the money. We, in fact, we have half the money already.
Yes.
Right? And we'll get the other half, I'm not sure when, but not in the, not too distant future.
Spring, I think, is the...
So we'll have all of the money in hand in the bank.
Yes.
And we have the flexibility, particularly under the standard allowance, to spend it wisely. And so the risk is that, and you have to commit to it by the end of, uh, 12/31/24. You have to commit to whatever you're spending on, particularly like if you had a roadway project or whatever you were doing, something like, you have to spend it by 12/31/26. So let's say you ordered the radios on December 31st, 24, and you got them in nine months later for some reason, you, you can still spend the money. Then somewhere in the future, there may be an audit by the feds of the spending. And that's where you get, where you could be exposed for spending money that the, the town, the community has deemed appropriately spent, but the audit, the Fed auditors say, uh, sorry, we don't think you could have, you should have spent that. So that's why we're being careful. Sarah's being a good gatekeeper, so we
Right. So, so to answer your question, oh, in, um, you know, kind of numeric terms, since, since the expenditures, you know, go all the way to 2024, then, then they would have to come in and audit sometimes after that. So I mean, it could be, you know, 27 by the time someone takes a look and says, you know, this is right, this is wrong, um, you know?
Yeah. So the other thing is it's different than CARES. See, CARES, uh, was distributed from the feds through the state. And the state had the gatekeepers, the approvers of how we spent it. And we had to report quarterly to the, to the state. And they would kick stuff out or not kick stuff out when we submitted for, so for example, uh, under CARES in one of the early stages, we submitted that we wanted money to buy radios for the police and fire and all that. And including, I would get a radio. So we're all on the same wavelength under the pandemic. And it was $28,000 worth of radios in our submission to the state for distribution of our CARES money that was allotted. And they said, no, we'll give you the money for some of these other things you've requested in advance, but we're not giving you money for the radios. Those don't count. ARPA is different because the state has nothing to do with this. Nothing. Um, and so the only people that are really the experts are the federal treasury people who, you know, given the process that I've seen them go through, I would argue, they aren't, they, this was, this has been a challenge for them to kind of refine how you can use the money. That's a nice way to say it.
I agree. You know, and, you know, their guidance is, um, you know, vague. So...
But so here's another example. We just got word, um, that the, from Senator Fatman's office, that they're pushing through the $75,000, um, award to the town. And that's from ARPA monies, right? That's, that's from federal money to the state that they're redistributing. And it's for building the salt shed. So somehow or other, they've concluded that the salt shed fits within the confines of ARPA. But I would suspect they're using a standard allowance train of thought when they do that.
Yes.
That's very exciting, but...
Yeah. So I think we want to adopt the standard allowance. So we want to authorize that. And then like I said, I think we want to kind of see all the expenditures. Um, maybe Peter, if you could send us a text, like to be like, hey, I sent you this yesterday, or so we make sure we take a look at it. And then we can see how things go. And then if we want to maybe revisit this in a quarter, and be like, you know what, just spend the money like this. And, you know, you don't have to come across everything. But for now, I would like to see all the spending.
Yep, and we're still figuring it out.
Sounds good.
Yeah, that sounds great. And we're still figuring it out as we go along anyway. It's a lot of material that, I think, Sarah, if you could just describe, you've been on some of these, uh, listservs with various communities. And people have kept their powder dry, as they say. They've
Yes.
not been out there spending it. And they're still not been out there spending it and they're still trying to figure it out.
So I have been very active on the mass municipal accountants listserv. Because obviously they're the closest to the expenditure of those funds. And I've definitely asked a few questions. And, you know, basically the responses that I'm getting from most communities are, you know, we're still trying to decide, we're still waiting, you know. Some, you know, of the topics, they're saying, we're not even considering that, you know, as part of our structure. So I keep trying to put that information out there on those listservs and get back, you know, whatever I can from them and kind of watch them for what they're asking questions about to one another. I'm also on the mass planners listserv, kind of trying to make sure, you know, seeing just how the planning side of things are going. You know, a lot of communities are doing, you know, community engagement surveys and this and that. A lot of the larger communities, they're, you know, kind of debating on different items, especially for low income folks and kind of giving them some funds to help them through. So, you know, just kind of keeping my ear to the street. But in general, communities are not spending this money at this time other than kind of planning, preparation, administration, and then some obvious, you know, testing and logistics for, you know, the COVID stuff. But this is, this has been a kind of a slow rollout, you know, because I think everyone just wants to make sure that they're utilizing their funds in the best way possible.
Alright, so I will make a motion to authorize that the town of Millville adopts a standard allowance. Now looking for a second.
Second.
Thank you, Andrew. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Excellent. Thank you so much.
Anything else you need from us, Sarah?
No, I guess that's it. Thank you so much for having me and everybody have a good evening.
Thanks, Sarah.
Okay, so there we go. Alright, so now going back up to the top. Um, any announcements?
No, I'll talk about one thing. It's sort of an announcement. It's not much of an announcement in the TA thing, other than that seventy five grand is moving forward, right, from Senator Fatman's office. And we'll know, it sounds like within the next couple of months, you know, there'll be agreements to sign and things like that, but it, it's, it's moving forward through the state system at this point.
And does that give us more flexibility in terms of spending when it comes from ARPA? Cause when it came from the budget, one of the things I discussed with Senator Fatman was like, it needs to be done by June thirtieth. So does it roll past that?
So I don't, I don't know that in terms of the timeframe on that, because is, I, I think I sent you that email and it said sixteen weeks is possible, right? And that doesn't give you a lot of time to get something done before the end of June. So I don't know, and that's an obvious thing to be seen where that winds up. The other part is that because they're using ARPA money for the salt shed, one can certainly argue, particularly under the standard allowance, that the delta, should there be any delta above seventy five, could also be funded from ARPA rather than going like we had the Warren article piece. So, you know, if they're using it as ARPA, I think we're okay to use ARPA money for it as well.
Yeah, no, that makes a lot of sense.
Yeah, the only other thing I would say, and I'll, I'll just jump it up, is some folks might have noticed some drones flying around. I don't know if they've been flying around yet, but they, we had a notice that there were going to be some drone inspections of the transmission corridor for Eversource. So they, they inspect their power lines. They used to use helicopters. Now they're going to be using drones and they have, you know, certified drone pilots. So if somebody sees a drone flying around and, you know, up over the, the wires, that's what it's all about. They just, an inexpensive way ideally for them to check their, their poles and their lines and so forth.
Yeah. I bet that's cheaper than renting out a helicopter and a pilot and someone else to, and do the inspections.
That's right.
Okay. Any correspondence?
I have nothing.
Okay. Minutes? I do not look at the minutes very thoroughly. I kind of skim them, but if Eagle Eye Andrew looked at them, I would be comfortable voting on them. Andrew, you didn't look at them either? Okay, I didn't really look.
No, 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 I did, I did.
Oh, great. You don't like the nickname Eagle Eye Andrew? Editor Master Andrew.
I don't know if I like either of those too much, but it's whatever. So I did have two things. So for the under minutes on the minutes, if it, probably should just say authorize the chair to sign for both of them, because it only says that on the first, or on the second one, not on the first one. But since we authorized you to sign all the minutes, probably should just put it there just for symmetry. And then under selectmen meeting calendar, I think it should just say the board reviewed instead of the chair reviewed. So besides that, that was all.
Todd, did you have any updates?
No, I didn't get a chance to look at them this week.
Okay. Are you comfortable approving them based on Andrew's edits?
Absolutely.
So I will make a motion to approve the January fourth, twenty twenty two meeting minutes pending Andrew's edits.
Second.
Andrew, I think Todd beat you by half a second. Any further discussion? I was in favor. Aye. Okay, great. Okay, so moving on to departments. So Peter, I saw your email that known from the board of health can attend this evening. There were some updates around the positivity rate you said, but I noticed those are still from November. Do we not have a January update?
No, I asked Sherry if she had anything, but that was late in the day, so. You know, I only got that email from her that nobody was coming and they invited the board to their next meeting, so.
When is their next meeting?
Two weeks, so probably a week from tomorrow night. But I'll have Sherry formally invite all of you and or one of you, and it depends on how you want to play that. You would have to post if all of you go or, you know, otherwise just leave it open ended and one of you might attend or might not attend. I have no input on the COVID nineteen update. I can only say anecdotally that it is raging. And I say that from my own personal perspective of family members are just dropping like flies out there, extended family and otherwise. So fortunately, nobody's really sick, but some have been hit a little harder than others.
Yeah.
I, I did watch the board health meeting. So on number five, the opioid settlement, as you know, you all weren't interested in participating. And they also are not interested in participating. So we're going to take no action there.
I just felt like the administrative costs could outweigh the actual recent, like, what we get. Okay, and then I think that from a mass mandate policy discussion, I think we're comfortable with department heads kind of governing their buildings as is. Is, does anyone not comfortable with that? Okay. Consideration of continuation of Millville State of Emergency?
Now, we discussed that the last time and, you know, we were just to take no action to change the situation as it is, right?
I agree.
And it was only looking for any of their input as board of health, but you don't get that tonight.
Yep, okay. So then I think we'll be, and then I guess the nursing services changed. So I know we switched to a different vendor.
Yes. And so from what I can tell, they're very happy with the service level that they're getting as well as the related cost. It's much less expensive.
Okay, great. So I think, so I can attend, then if the next board of health meeting is a week from tomorrow, what day is that? That'd be the twenty sixth?
Twenty sixth.
I can, I can attend that, Peter. So I'll go and just kind of reiterate that we're leaving, we're not moving any, we're not making any changes on the same emergency. We're leaving department heads to manage their buildings in terms of masks. We, you know, love to hear more about nursing. But then I think we can kind of just have like a, maybe a just a board of health general COVID update if needed on the agenda moving forward. Andrew, do you agree with that or disagree with that? Just in case something crazy happens, because unfortunately, I think we all know that something crazy could happen. So I'd like to have a placeholder there just in case it does and we need to talk about something. But generally, I feel like a lot of these matters are resolved, but we can kind of just keep a standing agenda item should we need to discuss it.
That's fine.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Okay, great. BMR capital planning update and discussion?
That's up to, you know, whatever you might have on that at this stage. We didn't invite anybody from the school at this stage.
Yep. So I spoke with them before our capital planning meeting last week. They were unable to attend because it was literally the next night. So they're going to attend the next meeting. Also, Andrew and Todd, you should congratulate Peter on being the new chair of the Millville Capital Planning Committee.
That's right. They asked for volunteers every, for volunteers step forward, everybody step back except me.
So Peter's the chair, I'm the vice chair to kind of keep for continuity, but, because I was cheering too and it was a lot and like I work and have kids. They want to eat three times a day, every day. So, Andrew, you don't know what that's like that Todd does, when you have to cook them meals all the time. I don't want chicken nuggets. I want this.
In order to like to eat three type meals a day, though.
Yeah, so exactly. And you like doing that, right? So my, my kids like doing that too. So, so that was one of the things. So Peter, thank you for stepping up. I really appreciate it from a personal perspective. And I think it's great continuity because Peter's been on this since we kind of did the reboot three years ago, I think, my first year before I was on the board of selectmen. So, let's see. So if I think about what we talked about in terms of the school, so they are going to attend an upcoming meeting and they have a couple of updates, sorry, small projects that they might ask us for some money. One, an example they gave was paving sections of the middle school driveway. And I guess there's sections of it that are really bumpy. And so the whole thing would be like eighty thousand dollars and Millville's assessment right now is twenty five point five eight percent. And I'm remembering that from the top of my head, so that could be wrong, but it was twenty five point something percent. So out of the eighty thousand dollars, we would pay, you know, a little over twenty thousand dollars. So I think I did the math. That was like twenty one thousand eight hundred and twenty. So that might help me work backwards from like whatever the decimal is. So they're going to have a few requests like that. And then also the asbestos project we'll have to talk about too. And in terms of, I did express to them the sticker shock that we had in terms of the school projects that they were looking at, the hundred million dollar price tag. And you know, I know that there are people in our community that if we were to raise the taxes that much, you know, they could potentially lose their homes. And I think that's really not where we want to be putting people. So I, we talked a little bit about the feasibility study. This was me with the board, with the superintendent, Dr. DeFalco and his assistant superintendent, Matt Aaronoff. And said, well, we could fund the feasibility study. And then, and we would owe twenty five percent of the seven fifty. And from that, we could look at, they might find more options. And we would tell them, I think, at the start to be like, look, you can come up with this hundred million dollar option, but the chance of it passing both towns is, you know, low. So is there a renovation project that's to put in place instead? And Todd, you made the good point of could we take a room by room kind of approach? So we can. But if we do a larger scale project, then we get reimbursed back to the MSBCA. If we take a room by room approach, the expense is a hundred percent on us. So that was one of the reasons why to go with, like, so I, like I did some math and said, hey, if we took the hundred million dollar project and made a fifty million dollar project, and then half of that was covered, then twenty five million dollars is left. And twenty five percent of that is six point two five million. You divide that over thirty years, divide by eleven hundred homes. Now the numbers, you know, instead of being, I don't know, it was like six hundred and seventy dollars, I think, it's, you know, less than half that. Six hundred and seventy dollars per household on average, Andrew, was the increase in taxes for the hundred million dollar project. So that would be ha, like, lower than that half-ish. So then that seems a little bit more manageable. And then maybe they find a forty two million dollar project or a twenty five million. That's where I was here, but I did give them that feedback and just said, and it's not that, I don't think anyone in our town would say, no, we don't have, you know, brand new shiny schools for our kids. Everyone wants to have brand new shiny schools for the kids. It's just the price tag is more than people can afford. And it's, it's a really tough spot to be in between looking at, you know, children's faces saying, please can I have a new school, which there are softies in our house, like that would, they would get. And then, then to other people saying, gee, I'd like to be able to live in my house. And looking at those faces too, so.
Yeah, bringing this up during a pandemic is kind of bad timing too.
Yes. Good point, Todd. So we'll see how it goes. I would support the feasibility study. There was a way, and I think we could take that out of, if the town authorized that for stabilizations. So say it's seven fifty. It was a range that they gave, seven fifty is the top range. So this is the most. Two five five eight. Yeah, hundred ninety one thousand eight fifty would be our. So we would put a dent in our stabilization. That's maybe something we'd look at, half stabilization, half ARPA. Maybe. And then that way it kind of softens the blow. We do that. Ninety five thousand nine two five from ARPA, ninety five thousand nine two five from stabilization. It's not such the punch to the gut. And we have free cash being certified too. There could be ten million dollars there. Okay, well, it could be a couple hundred thousand, maybe. So that would, the free cash would cover that entirely, so. Something to think about. So we don't have any kind of firm numbers on any of those things yet. That's really kind of the overall discussion. And they'll be at our next meeting, which is February first for our capital planning at seven PM. And we'll get more detail from the school then on those other smaller projects. Peter, anything else you wanted to share as the new chair of the capital planning committee?
So as the chair of the capital planning, I, I am a little confused as to the sequence of events that they're hoping to do. You know, they do in a, a letter of expression of interest, or there's a particular term for it, I keep forgetting, that they first do, and then if MSBA comes back, then they would do the feasibility. So I don't know if the feasibility study is, the timing of it is going to be for the spring town meeting or not. That said, I'll know more tomorrow, because I'm meeting with Matt and Jason.
Oh, great.
Just mainly to talk about budgeting stuff, but obviously we'll talk about this too, so.
And then when you speak with him, maybe he should do a slide kind of on like, you have to do this and this and this and this. And we had like that timeframe.
Yeah. And I'm not, you know, I, I haven't been bashful about sharing my impressions and suggestions on their messaging in this whole process. And so we'll be going through those too.
Peter, do you want to make a plug for OPEB? I know that's like really what you're going.
Well, that's the other piece of it is you can't ignore that. And we talked about it and it's a big number and then maybe it's in the budget. We'll see. And that'll be a healthy discussion tomorrow with them on the budgeting piece, what they are putting in there. And, you know, maybe the town needs to be prepared to take a bigger bite of the apple of that. And whether it's by finding the money in existing budgets within the guidelines or adding to it. And that's a concerted decision of the voters and taxpayers of the town. So, but it is a big challenge that cannot nor should not nor must not be ignored. Cause it just grows. Because it just grows.
Yep.
It is, uh, as I say, it's a, you know, a home equity loan where you're not even paying the interest, so it just adds to the principal. Gets uglier and uglier, by the tune of a million bucks every year for the district.
Okay. Um, and then the appointment of Jeffrey Beckwith. So I know we discussed this a little bit at the last meeting, because it came in kind of under the four-eight hour window. Um, it looks like he was a police officer and is familiar with the town before, so I don't really have any issues. I don't know if Andrew or Todd had any questions or anything about this appointment. No, okay.
I don't have any concerns.
Yeah. Feel like I've been making all the motions, would someone else like to make a motion?
So I'll appoint Jeffrey Beckwith as a part-time police officer for terms through. June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two.
Thank you, Andrew.
A second.
Thank you, Todd, any further discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, well, congratulations, Mr. Beckwith, and welcome to Millville. We did five D already, so six A, new business. So Peter, as Chair of the Capital Planning Committee in Millville, I think this goes over to you.
Well, it does, and we have Rich Crivello, who's been, he's written a preliminary draft of a facilities master plan, if you will. And he's working on coming to some recommended courses of action, which hopefully he'll have available for the Capitol Committee. On his next meeting on the first. But the, the committee wanted to somehow make him a larger contributing member, a group, part of the committee. He can't be an official committee member because all the slots are taken, basically, under the bylaws. It's the town administrator, it's a representative from the Board of Selectmen, which is Chair Gill here. Uh, it's a representative from the Finance Committee, it's a representative from the Planning Committee, and then it's three members of the, you know, the community at large. And they've all, uh, they're already on the committee, so. Initially, the, what I have on the agenda is to appoint him as an associate member, but since putting this agenda together. I've consulted with council and we technically can't do that as an associate member. So I'm gonna ask you to appoint him as a, um, an adv, what did I say, an advisory member? An advisor to the Capital Planning Committee, is what I said. And, uh, and he's happy with that, what it does is it recognizes the fact that he is a, a voice to be heard at all meetings. When we're talking about facilities and recognizes the fact that he's a significant contributor to the process, so. I think it's a great thing, so I ask you to make him an advisor to the Capital Planning Committee.
And he wouldn't be able to vote on things, right? He just can participate fully in the meetings.
Correct, so, and the committee would, you know, we will probably at the next meeting, just take a vote to recognize his status. And that none of the members have any concerns with his participation in ongoing meetings. Uh, but again, yes, he cannot be a voting member.
Okay.
That would require a bylaw change. And that's not, that's not necessary, frankly.
What would the term be?
So it would be open-ended basically until, you know, we have, uh.
So he finishes the plan.
You know, he finishes the plan and we have buildings that, uh, we're certain of in terms of town halls and. Police stations and who knows what, quite frankly, I, I suspect he'd be participating in that process. As, as much as we can, we could use him as much as we can, I think.
Yeah. Um, but if we do want to, like, Andrew, if you were uncomfortable and wanted to have him for our term, I think if we did through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. And we could reappoint him as an advisor after that, so that way, I think a year and a half. You know, we always talk about goals, we'd like to, you know, kind of. At least have the plan done by twenty twenty-three, I mean, it's taking forever.
Yeah, so that, that, that sounds fine to me, and so it asks that you, you know, appoint him as an advisor to the Capital Program Committee. I use that term because that's the precise bylaw term.
It's both in the bylaws, actually.
It is both, I know, and you keep saying that, but I just have gonna be, whatever it is, and so, uh, June thirtieth, twenty-three, yeah.
Okay.
That would be wonderful.
Okay. Looking for a motion?
Um, I'll appoint Richard Crivello as a, sorry, what was the? Advisor to the Capital Program Committee for term ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
Thank you, any further discussion? Alls in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
That's great.
Welcome, Mr., he has been amazing, like, in the meetings, he's always giving really great advice. The plan he wrote, I think I forward to both of you, I mean, it's really extensive with options, it's just. I am amazed and thankful and very appreciative of just this resource we have available to help us navigate this.
So just real quick, talking about committees, do we have to dissolve the building inspector committee, the search committee?
I think what's gonna happen there and talking to the chair on that, uh, there's one more meeting that he should have. Which goes over executive session minutes, the committee would approve those, and then a vote of that committee to come to the board. He would then come to the board and ask to be dissolved, that committee to be dissolved.
Okay.
Process, okay?
Okay. Yeah.
Quick question, sorry, um, so I remember we, a while ago, probably a couple of years at this point. Um, but we had appointed Richard Crivello as a advisor, I forget what the.
He was an ad hoc advisor to the town administrator, and that was open-ended, yes.
Yeah.
So that's, and it, and it was him and Jerry Finn.
Yep.
And so they remain in those roles too, should I call on them for advice, just to advise me as the town administrator? Not conflicting or maybe it's confusing, I don't know that there'd be any need, but there's no reason to, to. Take away that appointment, I guess.
Yeah, no, my only thing would be, would, would you need to be a special, um? No, never mind, that was.
I know what you're asking, but no, I don't.
Yeah, no, he wouldn't, yeah.
There's no compensation or anything.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
Yep.
Okay. Great. Um, some old business, so discussion of actions that can be taken items not reasonably anticipated forty hours prior to meeting. So Peter, I saw you had an email from the attorney?
Yeah, so I'd asked the council, you know, regarding the forty-eight hours, this came up last meeting where we were talking about appointing the, uh. Uh, the officer, part-time officer, and so I asked the council, you know, on this, can, can action be taken on a matter that's brought up within forty-eight hours? Can the BOS vote on the matter, and that, can the matter include an appointment? That may be considered to have some time pressure where early action is the best interest of the town, that's how I phrased my questions. He came back with yes to all three, but then he qualified it with a lengthy paragraph, which basically suggests he'd be wise to. Do exactly what the board did and, you know, leave it for action for a future meeting. You can do it if you really had to, but it's not typically advisable to do.
Okay, so if it's an emergency.
Yeah.
We'll take action, if not, then we can.
That's right.
Have a discussion here, gee, if this waits two weeks, is that gonna be detrimental, if it's no, then we wait the two weeks.
That's right.
Okay, that sounds good.
Yep.
Um, public forum, Alex, is there anyone on public forum?
Just checking here, nope, no comments.
Okay, we'll give everyone a minute, if you wanna jump in and ask a question, you certainly can. So select member reports, so I'll start Andrew's at the top, we'll go this way, so Andrew, anything?
Nope.
Okay, Todd?
Nope.
Okay, for me, just promoting the Capital Planning Committee meeting, uh, February first at, at seven PM. And I guess that's it. And town administrator report, anything here, Peter?
Uh, sure, I just update, you know, the budget guidance letter that you all bought into last meeting has gone out. Tara, the town accountant, is putting the model together, and so that will be distributed to all department heads. To start filling in the blanks, and then that gets assembled and, um, the budgeting process really gets underway. I told you, I have a meeting with the superintendent assistant superintendent tomorrow, um, regarding budgeting. Uh, so I look forward to them, they've always been, uh, they, they, they reached out to me to have the meeting. Uh, they've always in the past been very good working with the town, and I expect that will be continuing. Unless they come for big numbers, then we'll have trouble, but no, just kidding. The, you know, Mass Municipal Association puts together an annual meeting every year, they, they didn't have it last year. This year they planned to have it, um, and then at the last minute, just the middle of last week, they canceled it, basically. They're not gonna do in-person, they're gonna have their meetings virtual and remote and that sort of thing, so that's just something. Uh, consistent with caution on, in regards to the pandemic and, uh, they, you know, they're the experts and they said, geez. We're not comfortable being face to face as much as we planned and wanted to, and people made hotel reservations, and I don't know what else to, uh, to attend. So just putting that out there. Uh, Metacomit, you know, our ME, MECC, which is Metacomit Emergency Communications Center. As, as you all recall, we're under that arrangement as part of five, five other communities, including. Uh, our friends, uh, friends in Mendon with whom we were, uh, you know, regional dispatch with them previously. We merged into, uh, the Metacomit and have, have gotten underway. I know that there have been some concerns, um, with some of our public safety folks in terms of the information they're getting. The timeliness, the accuracy and the responsiveness, and they've been back and forth with some of the, uh. You know, the folks on the payroll over there, trying to get things resolved, uh, not necessarily as timely and as well as they'd like. So they do have periodic workshops, the, I, I sit on the board, I'm not on the board officially. Mendon and Millville have one vote, so, and will alternate. The TA from Mendon is currently the voting board member with the other previously existing four communities. Starting July first, I would be the voting member for representing Mendon, Millville. That said, I get to speak, ask questions, interact and so forth, as if I were a voting member. I do raise issues, I do sit in on executive sessions, I get to ask questions on those and. The whole thing, uh, under this deal, um, Millville's full, uh, participation in Metacomit. Our share of the cost is, uh, for the next, for the initial three years is covered a hundred percent by State nine-one-one. Uh, so we have no, uh, you know, dispatch costs, if Millville were to do it itself, you know, twenty-four-seven dispatch. That would be, I don't know, three, four hundred grand a year, plus, you know, ancillary benefits and OPEBs and all that kind of stuff. Um, but there are some kinks to be worked out. Um, you know, they're trying to work with us, I, I think, you know. You, it, maybe in the future, you may wanna be, it sounds like at least one of you all would certainly like to. Know more about what's going on there on a periodic basis from the chiefs. Maybe at the next meeting, we bring the chiefs in to talk about some of the issues they've, they've had with Metacomit.
I think that's a good idea.
Yeah, I'm playing, uh. I get reasonable responsiveness, but not to the technical stuff, I don't know that enough about the technical things to ask the right questions. I am periodically copied on some of the communications and therefore that suggests they're trying to be responsive. I might share some of the concerns with the Chair of the, the board, uh, who is the town manager of Franklin. And, and the executive director, Gary Primo of Metacomit, uh, who ultimately, I guess, I'm his boss. So one of his five, six bosses, if you will. I haven't gotten to that point other than, geez, I want you guys to work this out and get together and, you know, they, they want, we want them to come out here. They want us to go there, so there's some meeting of the minds there to see the operation, I've seen it. It's phenomenal equipment, the process they use, uh, allows for some miscommunication. Where the call comes in and is received by a person at a desk, and then that call information is transferred to the dispatch person. Who then reaches out to the public safety folks out in the field, and the challenge there is that the communication can get misconstrued. Um, and I, I don't know how you call it, whether it's a vertical or horizontal level of communication, but other dispatches use the ninety-degree different. Or one hundred and eighty-degree different, you know, if this is vertical, the other ones use horizontal, where the call comes in and the person dealing with the public safety. Is the same person, so they're interacting with the, the, the calling party at the same time they're interacting with the, the person providing the service. That's not what happens with Metacomit, they're not set up for that, none of the equipment is set up for that. And I think their biggest real challenge that's causing all these problems, uh, is their inability to have. Uh, to get proper staffing who are retained, and so they're constantly churning through people who are in process of training. And leaving, and, uh, that's, we as a result can suffer from their inability to do what they need to do. Well and timely, but again, I think having the chiefs here will educate you even better than I could begin to try.
Okay, that sounds good. Um, Alex, coming back to you, see if anyone raised their hand for public forum?
No, no comments.
Okay. Um, Peter, items not reasonably anticipated as forty-eight hours prior to your meeting?
Nothing.
No, okay. Our next meal will be February seventh, twenty twenty-two, we already did the signatures. So anyone have anything else on any of the agenda items before we go into executive session? No, okay. So I will make the motion that we enter executive session, only return to open session to adjourn. Yes, so I move that the Board of Selectmen enters to executive session per Massachusetts General Lancy thirty A, twenty-one A three. To discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the Teamsters Union Local one-seventy, the Town of Millville Fire Fringers Unit. I further move that the Board of Selection enter executive session per Massachusetts General Lancy thirty A, twenty-one A three. Discuss strategy relative to pending litigation to Toma versus Millville, where discussion of these matters in open session would have a detrimental effect. On the litigation position of the town, looking for a second.
Second.
Thank you, Andrew, any discussion? Okay, so roll call, Andrew?
Aye.
Todd?
Aye.
Jennifer is aye. All right, so Alex, if you wanna stop broadcasting, make me the host, and then you can enjoy your evening.